All right, at this time, if town meeting members could find their seats. Just a reminder, the seats in the front of the room with the tables are reserved for town meeting members, open seats in the back for any of our visitors or guests. At this time, as we open all of our meetings, if you guys would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could remain standing for just a moment, as we have a moment of silence for men and women around the world protecting our freedoms. Thank you, please be seated. All right, hey, you may have noticed you've got little name cards in front of you. Those are, you can thank one of our newest members, Stephanie Schalkowski, Schalkowski, for those. She came up with the idea that, you know, it'd be nice if the newer people could identify some of the more senior members, and also the senior members could get to know who the new people are. So they have names on the front and back, so the people behind you can see who you are, too. At the end of the day, if you want to take those home and bring them back at the next meeting, feel free. If you want to leave them up here on the front desk, we'll make sure they're available for you next week, no problem either way. Okay, our tellers this evening are Ms. Palumba from Precinct One, Mr. Rosetti from Precinct Two. The tellers will please come forward and be sworn to their duties.
Do you spread faithfully across your performing duties as a teller for the town meeting for the town or Sogas to the best of your ability? Congratulations.
All right, and at this time, the town clerk will call the roll.
Bell.
Here.
Verubie.
Here.
Brown.
Yeah.
Camuso.
Yes.
Chapores.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
Codham.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Curry.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Delios.
(Inaudible).
Doherty.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Federico.
Here.
Ferrari.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Grabowski.
Yeah.
Herman Durant.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Long.
Yeah.
Lopresti, Minugian.
Yeah.
McCarthy.
Yeah.
McCullough.
Yeah.
Meredith.
Yeah.
Mareschi.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Pelashi.
Here.
Palumba.
(Inaudible).
Panetta.
Here.
Panico.
Yeah.
Peolini. Parlente.
President.
Rafkinek.
Here.
If I said that wrong, I'm sorry.
(Inaudible).
Ring.
Here.
Brizetti.
President.
Sacco.
Yeah.
Shenna.
Yeah.
Scuzzarella.
Here.
Schalkowski.
President.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Straznick.
President.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Travers.
Here.
Wallace.
Yeah.
Whitcomb.
Yeah.
Worthley.
Here.
Forty-six, here, four absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I did receive notification from Mr. Peolini and Mrs. Lopresti with regrets that they wouldn't be able to join us this evening. Hey, one of our members reminded me, typically when we have our first meeting after a new election, one of the things we do is go over the Town Meeting Code of Conduct. It's just a one-page thing, and I neglected to do that at the last meeting, so we're going to do that now, and then we'll move on. Our Town Meeting Code of Conduct, "Any person who is employed in any capacity," example, attorney, architect, broker, et cetera, "by another interested in an article under discussion should disclose his or her employment and relationship before speaking. Any person who has a financial interest in an article under discussion should disclose his or her financial interest before speaking thereon. Any person who is the spouse, parent, child, brother, or sister of a person who has a financial interest in an article under discussion should disclose such relationship before speaking thereon. Any town meeting member who is referred to in any of the above paragraphs should consider a voluntary abstention from voting on the article in question. Notification of the abstention should, when possible, be given to the moderator in writing before the session in which the article is considered, but at least before debate on the article. However, this does not prohibit the member from voting if he or she feels that objectivity is not compromised. Any town meeting member moving reconsideration must have voted on the prevailing side and must so affirm for the motion in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and town meeting members should strive to allow all persons who can illuminate the issue at hand the opportunity to speak before moving the previous question." Thank you. All right. Please put all cell phones and other electronic devices in silent mode. Members are reminded that the use of electronic devices during meetings is restricted to viewing documents or websites pertinent to the articles before us, and texting, gaming, or other uses are prohibited. The first order of business is accepting the minutes of the previous session. While I do have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting available, if anyone needs to review them, since a copy is currently posted on the town website, and knowing that you're all diligent about reviewing them online, if there's no objection, the minutes of the last session will be accepted by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the minutes are accepted as posted. When recognized to speak, all speakers are asked to step up to the podium. Town meeting members, please state your name and precinct. Represented other town officers or employees, state your name and your position in the town, and Sogas citizens, just your name and address. That way, everyone at home can see and identify with who they're hearing. We will be observing the appropriate time limits for speakers per Section 208 of the town bylaws. Couple of quick housekeeping things. If the night runs long, we'll interrupt for a restroom break, but if anyone needs to use the facilities during the night, by all means, do so. In the event of an alarm requiring us to evacuate, you can exit through the rear doors of the auditorium and go down the stairs, make a U-turn to go out the front door. There's also a stairway through the doorway at my left, your right, that will take you down to the side exit and out to Hamilton Street. We have 27 articles remaining on our annual town meeting warrant this year. Six of those are zoning articles that we won't be able to act on until after the holiday. We do have recommendations from the Finance Committee on Articles 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 16. We also have six articles on the annual warrant that don't require recommendations, so we have more than enough to keep us busy tonight. The next order of business is to hear and act on reports of committees, beginning with the Finance Committee. Do we have anyone here from the Finance Committee? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any other committees that would like to report out this evening? All right, seeing none. We have no old business before us, so we can go right on with the orders of the day. At this time, since we don't have recommendations for the budget, the water and sewer, I would recommend, I would entertain a motion to take Articles 10, 11, 12, and then 14, 15, and 16 out of order. We have a motion made. Do I have a second? All in, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. As a courtesy to the Superintendent of Schools, or, sorry, as a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 10 for consideration to see if the town will vote a sum of money from the Superintendent, I'm sorry, from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programs, not supplanting it pursuant to Article 2 of the October 24, 2022 special town meeting, whereas voted by town meeting, the Sogas Public Schools Supplemental Support Reserve Fund proposal is hereby incorporated by reference. Said fund shall be transferred to a special review fund, revenue fund, to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal in Article 2 referenced above and in accordance with Mass. General Laws. The Finance Committee's recommendation, they wrote it, voted to recommend that the town appropriate the sum of $500,000 from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article 2 of the October 24, 2022 special town meeting, whereas town meeting voted. The Sogas Public Schools Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund proposal is hereby incorporated by reference. Said fund shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to town meeting and in accordance with Mass. General Laws. Do I have a second on Article 10? All right, Article 10 moved and seconded. Mr. Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sure the schools will get up and speak on this, but I did want to say that this Article 10 is something that the school leadership has, and myself, have spoken about numerous times, have met, collaborated on. I know that, and I talked about this at length at the Finance Committee meeting, is that we all want the schools to succeed. This is, I think, an article that can allow us, as town meeting members, as elected and appointed officials, selectmen, Finance Committee, all of us as a community to come together to support the schools in supporting the education and the children and bringing those gaps up in their achievement and what's happened over the pandemic and, as I think, continued, not just in Sogas, but in all districts. One of the ways, I think, to ensure, I have to take in all the information from all different people's views and try to build confidence so that we can work together, and I think one of the things that the schools and I come up with is this article, which is crafted in a way that takes money out of that reserve fund that town meeting voted back in 2022 in May at the town meeting. This gives us an ability of creating a special fund that the money can only be used for those purposes that were stated in that Article 2 from 2022. The schools have outlined some of those enrichment programs and ways of touching the children. I know we always talk about how do we, how do we, how do we support and how do we get behind the schools and the kids, and I think that this is one way that this is going to do this, is going to be able to put financial and funding behind some of the ideas that the school department has. I know I had meetings, smaller meetings with town meeting members, they had different questions. I'm sure there'll be some questions and all that, but I really do think that this is set up, I mean, obviously, people can have different nuances to this, but this would, this process here of the money and accessing the money would be the same as if town meeting voted on a sewer article for sewer main replacement, and the town or tried to spend the money on something other than that, it wouldn't be allowed through accounting and through the Finance Director and myself. So that's sort of, I think, the way to set it up, so that, the idea would be, I would see is that they would try to maybe make some benchmarks, implement this, and then be able to come back publicly and explain, you know, where they, how successful this was, what results they've gotten, to try to bring our kids back up to where they need to be and to make sure that we're moving towards becoming a number one, you know, top-rated school system. So I think this is a way for all of us to get behind this and support this, and I'm sure the schools will get up and explain, and I'm sure there'll be some questions, but that's sort of the background and the context of how this has come about, and I think this is a way of us all being a part of the school's success and supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Further discussion on Article 10? Mr. Serino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, and ladies and gentlemen at home watching tonight. I'd just like to clarify, I don't know how many read the item today, but I received a lot of phone calls of myself, Selectman Serino, meeting with the Mr. Hashem, the Superintendent, over this article, and it was not me, it was my cousin, Vinnie Serino. He's the one, he's got a little bald-headed over there. So Mr. Flynn from the item, Mike, and he's Vinnie Serino. They get the last, you get the last name right, but I also want to thank the hard work of the school committee and Mr. Hashem, and I support the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. Any further discussion on Article 10? Yes, Mr. Carter.
I just have a question for the town manager, just as a matter of clarification, and before I do that, I just want to preface my remarks by saying that everyone here has to know that because of the pandemic, our students did suffer, as did students across the country, with regard to that inability to get the proper environment for their, for their education. So I agree that this is a very good idea, and I am supporting it. But the article that we passed in 2022 was to the effect that any requests for funding from this fund has to clear with the Finance Committee, and I just wanted to be sure that that's the case, so that the school department will have to go before them to verify with Finance Committee that what they want to expend the money is in conjunction with the purpose for which this is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Great. Just to, for the Speaker to answer that question, so what's been vetted is the, the use of the monies that they've presented, and I think at some point, probably sooner or later, the schools should, the superintendent should get up and talk about, I think, what it is they're proposing. But as far as the monies, if this is passed, then these monies would go into a special account, and then they'd have to adhere to those, the town accountant and the regular processes for processing payments would have to go through that, go through that process. So the Finance Committee process and the manager process that's in there has to do with this process here to getting the town meeting to ask for that, those allocations. The article sets up a separate special account that would have to be, where the schools would have to submit invoices and expenses to that account, to be charged to that, and that would have to be approved by, and in compliance with municipal finance law. I hope that answers your question. I think you make a good point. I think part of it is that all of us want this to work, and we want to support our schools and our children. When people say it's about the kids, it's about the kids, and I think this is, I think, about baby steps as far as building confidence and support. You know, if we have funds, I think, because originally this started some time ago, and people were talking about trying to figure out, well, what's in the budget now that we can then put into this article and take the money out and supplement our budget? And I think after discussions and working that out, I think the schools and the town are on the same page, that the money's not to sort of, you know, it's a supplement, not to supplant, meaning pay for things that are already in the budget or have been in the budget. And I think that's important because, you know, I use the example at FinCom, I think, a couple, I think, a year or two ago. If you're trying to, you don't have enough mechanics to fix cars, and you give X amount of dollars to say, okay, here, you know, let's, let's figure out how we can fix some more cars, and the money spent on buying software, computers, buying a new lift, buying computers and things to hook up to the cars to figure out what's wrong with them, and we don't actually buy or spend the money on people touching the engines in the cars to fix them. I use that as an example of, this needs to touch the kids. It has to be something that directly affects education and kids, and I think that's the wisdom of town meeting when they voted this in 2022. And I think that's an ability for the schools to say, hey, in, you know, you know, Weston, they have this type of program, or in Linfield, they have this program that's really supporting kids. They have an MCAS support system after school, or they have, you know, robotics program that runs year-round that helps kids perform better on MCAS and perform better in the classroom, which then ultimately helps the entire district. I think that's what the goal is, and I think the schools and my discussions with them and the leadership are on the same page with that. And I know people had different questions that came up about some of the items that are listed and different issues, and I'm sure that'll come up, but, you know, I think it would be prudent for the school department and the superintendent to kind of talk about some of their thoughts and processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 10?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Minugian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. My question is for the Superintendent. How do you know, how will you know whether or not this program is successful? In other words, what forms of evaluation will you use at the end of the program, and how will you report that back?
Thank you, Mr. Minugian. Is the Suprem, oh, Mr. Hashem?
Thank you very much. Mike Hashem, Superintendent, Sogas Public Schools. I want to thank everybody for entertaining this. I want to thank the school committee for supporting us on this, and the Finance Committee as well, as well as the town manager, Mr. Crabtree. This, what we're putting together for this program would be an enrichment program. It would involve classes with an academic background, as well as those that would be educational but enjoyable for the students as well. So, for example, right now, we have a program in the Belmonte on robotics. We would like to expand the robotics program, enrichment program, up into the middle school and continue on with that. We would be entertained, we piloted this program at the Belmonte already. Dr. Lukey had about 120 kids do a six-week program this past spring, where they were able to participate in a variety of enrichment activities, included study skills, a newspaper group, robotics was in there, I'm trying to remember what, what else was in there, golf, there was, there was a beginner's golf. So what, what the goal of this is, and those of you who have been here a while realize when we went forward to put together a master plan to build the Sogas High School, Middle School complex, one of the things we wanted to do is to make sure that the educational process didn't stop at 2:15 when the school day ended. And it also didn't just entail, you know, sports or just the generic clubs that we've had along the way. We wanted to make that building and our other buildings something that kids could stay after school and get involved in enrichment activities, so that the day didn't end at 2:15, and that they could have these various offerings. Naturally, the pandemic set us all the way back to where we are now. So I think now, more than ever, it's very important to establish these programs, get this up and running. I'm looking to run six-week programs, four times over the course of the year, where the students would enroll in, depending on what day they wanted after school, a variety of programs, whether it be study skills, MCAS remediation, tutoring help, robotics, a book club to, to improve their reading skills. As far as measuring what a success would be, I think one of the biggest success rates we could find in this program would be a participation rate, because right now, we're, our students are, I think, struggling to find things to do after school in a constructive manner. I know parents, as a parent, you're looking to have something for the students to do after school that is both academic and something that the students want to be involved in. So that's why we're trying to do that and make that happen. So I think a rate of participation would be a certain indicator as whether it's a success. As to whether there would be a, like, point-for-point success, I'm not sure we'd see that. I would like to see scores like MCAS go up. I would like to see SAT scores go up, and I would think that this would be a way to try to reconfigure the norm to where we now are back where we want to be, because I think every community, I talked to a lot of the other superintendents, the students were definitely slowed up by the pandemic. It wasn't a Sogas thing, it wasn't a Massachusetts thing, it wasn't even a United States thing. They were slowed up, and I think they, one of the biggest single problems that they had was the isolation of being at home without others and without facing an instructor. So I think if we can use this program to expand the school day for more students, I think that would be a huge help and would definitely bridge that instructional and educational gap that we have. I'm not sure if I answered Mr. Minugian's question, I'm not sure if I followed up with Mr. Crabtree, but that covers a lot of it. And we did run a pilot, because when I was, came in as the acting superintendent last year, and I talked to the town manager about this fund, and he said, if you, if you want to do a program like this to make sure you either test it out or haven't really thought out. So this spring, when we tested it out in the Belmonte in a very small scale, it had a, you know, a really positive impact with the sense that we could only do, we could only have so many kids, we actually had to turn away students because we didn't have enough slots to fill, and there were 120 students at the Belmonte that took part in that, and they came before the school committee a couple weeks ago to showcase all of their successes. So I think that would be another way to judge how the program went. And it was, the successes were even surprising to me, because we had students that spent six weeks, and these were elementary school students, grades two to five, put together a newspaper that they were very proud of and showcased in front of the entire school committee. They had a small theater group that talked about how they learned to do public speaking and do things behind the scenes. So I think, like I said, I think we've done it on a small scale, this would help go a long way to expand it all the way out throughout the district and make it so it isn't a one-off, and that would be six weeks each of the four terms of the school year, and that way, more and more students could get involved.
Thank you, Mr. Hashem. Any further discussion on Article 10?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rob Straznick, Precinct 9. Just a couple of questions. The recommendation says the money's coming from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund. What I didn't see, and maybe I just missed it, but how much money is in that account, and how was that account originally funded? And secondary to that, if that money was not earmarked as part of the school committee budget, if the programs are valuable and they sound like it, how come they're not being prioritized within the school committee's existing budget?
Thank you, Mr. Straznick.
I can answer the first two questions. I think the last one would be for the schools, but this was funded, if you look at Article from May of, the warrant from 2022, May, maybe ninth, October? I'm sorry, October of 2022, that's in the backup information that you provided. That talks about where the funding came from. That was allocated through Article 2 into that account, or the special, right? And I think it was north of $3 million that was deposited there, and that's where the money is. And again, I guess, just to reiterate, there's enough money there to be able to implement these things, these different programs and ideas. Obviously, if they want additional monies, they'd have to come back here and do the same process. But this, this question did come up at the Finance Committee meeting. I think that if, you know, there's enough there for a few years of doing these type of programs that are directed at improving, and I think that's part of one of the previous speaker's questions, improving scores and academic achievement for students. And I think that there's a, you know, a formula that a lot of the private schools use and charter schools use that I think they're trying to tap into as far as making a well-rounded student that's able to problem-solve and be, and those things translate, hopefully translate onto the MCAS and SATs and whatnot. But I think that, to be clear, you know, this is only sustainable for a few years, so if there's programs they, they think are important, they should be prioritizing those. And I think that's part of why there's a little bit of a different process here to give you, as a town meeting member that approves funding, an ability to have some checks and balances. And I think that's the difference of if the money was just, so just so you understand, and we can talk pretty straight here, I think, everybody knows, you know, I'm a huge supporter of the Sogas school systems, push to have the new schools built, and do what I can to provide as much funding to the schools. But the reality is that I think people have a feeling that the money, the schools get the money, it's a bottom-line the money, it's a bottom-line budget, so once they get the money, they present the budget, and that budget changes the next month. Every month is a change and a transfer. So, you know, I think that there are worries of how that is and what's sustainable. You know, I think back a few years ago, we all sort of celebrated having, you know, a grant for the schools to bring in all-day kindergarten, right, which I think is a positive thing. But how is it sustainable? And I think that's the, what happens is then that money, grant money runs out, and then the ask to the town goes from 1.3 to 1.8 million to pay for what we said was for free. And I think that that's, you know, sort of, you know, some of the stuff that we're trying to learn and figure out, I think, for the school system. And I think that's one of the ways this is set up, where they'd have to come back and sort of reiterate and explain how the funding and the money has really supported students. And I think the example I gave with the mechanics, if, you know, you don't hire people that are actually touching the engines or touching the kids, you're not going to get results. There's nothing's going to change. And I think the money here is so that the schools can then focus on what they think is really a priority that's within these guidelines that will affect the children and touch the children directly. And so, hopefully, we'll see some results with that. The other question, I think I defer to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Hashem.
I think the other question is more what happens if it is successful, or we need the more money, or, well, it is a priority right now, but this is a way we can finance it to see if it is in fact a program that's going to work. I think it will work. It worked at a small scale at the Belmonte, I hope that it will work. And this, this, this funding meets the needs of this support reserve fund. So, we, as a group and a school committee and a school community, decided that if we do it and pilot it this way, if it works in the next couple of years, naturally, it would become a priority, and we could take what we have with it and put it back into, it would become part of our foundational budget. One thing that is involved in some of these and some of the costs would be some of the materials, like the robotics, and some of those materials will be a one-time cost or mostly a one-time cost, so those could be things that could be repurposed going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's okay. And also, just to add to that, so people understand the finance part of it, right? So, if you talk about the three, $3 million-plus dollars, if that was in the school budget now, their operating budget, they would have expended that in operations, right, the past year? And we don't know what they would have used it for, right? Hopefully, it would have been some of these things. But this year, they're asking for 2.6 or something, 2. something. This year, if that money was in operations, they'd be asking for almost, you know, $6, $7 million more than two years ago. And so, that's the sustainability part of the issue that we have to sort of see what happens. I think if the schools were, and this is nobody's fault systemic, right? This has been going on for years, and public schools in general, all over the state and country are struggling. You have state mandates, all kinds of costs that go up that sort of cause budgetary constraints. And, you know, we're certainly affected by that in Saugus. But I think that the goal is really to see how do we help kids read, write, and do arithmetic and get back to the basics so that they're able to score and do well on MCAS and be able to problem solve and do things well on SATs and be able to be successful moving on in life, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Further discussion on Article 10? Yes. Mr. Pelashy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Bob Pelaski, Precinct 7. As with all programs, I'm assuming that, I don't like the word "assuming," I'm sure that the superintendent will have metrics, dashboard, something that you can measure quantitatively year over year, and to other communities as well, to see how we're doing. That's true, right?
Mr. Hashem replied in the affirmative. Any further discussion on Article 10? Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself to the folks at home, and the floor is yours.
Vincent Cereno, 15 Forest Street, Saugus School Committee. I just want to first thank you for your consideration on this. There's a lot of talk about how we're going to measure this, and I think, at the end of the day, we're going to measure it, as Mr. Hashem said, by the enrollment we get in this and what the kids come out of it with. We did the pilot program at the Belmonte, and what we saw from the kids at the meeting and what they talked about is what they learned, right? The newspaper club, they learned how to put up a newspaper together. Each person had their own section to do and showed us how they completed it. So, I think at the end of the day, we will have finite numbers, how we did, but at the end of the day, I think you're going to see what the kids got out of it. And I think that's the most important thing. And when you talk about, why don't we roll this into our regular budget? I think because the schools have a lot of needs, right? Are we going to take $500,000 out of our regular budget, which is, to me, nine to 10 teachers, to see if something like this works? Town meeting, town manager has given us this opportunity to put this together and see if we can make a difference. And I, like I said, most importantly, I just want to thank you guys for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, not Mike Cereno. Any further discussion on Article 10? Yes, Mr. Davis.
Glenn Davis, Precinct 4, one town meeting member. To quantify the pilot program, I can say it was a success, at least on my part. My granddaughter was part of it. She did, she was part of the newspaper, she presented it at the school committee meeting. She was initially a very shy kid, but she was kind of, came out of her shell with this whole program. She did a lot of public speaking with it, she got to meet with her friends. After-school was a great time. I know a lot of parents now are struggling, you know, you need two incomes, you can't just have one. They need someone for the, somewhere for the kids to go, and this is a place for them to go, where they can learn, they can continue with their education, they can continue their social aspects, meaning it's sports and everything, theater is and everything. This is giving the kids an opportunity. So, I encourage you, please vote for this article. I'm definitely voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion on Article 10? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article 2 of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by Town Meeting. The Saugus Public School Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund proposal is hereby incorporated by reference. Said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to Town Meeting and in accordance with Mass. General Laws. All in favor of that recommendation as stated, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, hearing none, Article 10 has passed. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 11 for consideration to see if the town will vote to ratify, approve, and confirm the vote adopted under Article 14 of the warrant of the May 3, 2021 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to which the town voted to authorize the borrowing of $2,906,400 to pay costs of funding water main projects, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or to take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee's recommendation was that the town ratify, approve, and confirm the vote adopted under Article 14 of the warrant of the May 3, 2021 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to which the town voted at that, at the session of May 10, 2021 to authorize the borrowing of $2,906,400 to pay costs of funding water main projects, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or to take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a second on Article 11? All right, Article 11 moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, this is a, once in a while, we have these articles that have to be reaffirmed. Just to be clear, this was already voted in 20, Town Meeting in 2021, and this is taking advantage of the state program for funding. And when we go out to borrow, bond counsel reviews all the documents, reviews the postings, reviews how it was voted. I think we talked about this in the last meeting about certain votes with borrowing need to be a roll call by our bylaws unless they are unanimous. And so, sometimes that's not clear with bond counsel, and then they ask us before, that allows us to go out to borrowing, is to bring this back to Town Meeting and have it revoted to reaffirm the vote, because it may have been some sort of a defect in it. And that's, that's what this is asking for, so that we can annually take advantage of that special interest rate financing for our capital improvement plan within the Water Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If you remember, last, last week at the meeting, I called for a roll call vote, and it appeared unanimous, but then I second-guessed myself and said, well, was it actually unanimous? Or just nobody said no? And we went to a show of hands to confirm that it was actually unanimous. So, again, given where this was questioned at that level, is, first of all, is there any other discussion on Article 11? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote, but I am going to ask for the town clerk to take a roll call vote, so it's official. So, when the town clerk calls your name, if you're in favor of reconfirming Article 11, signify by saying yes. If not, signify by saying no.
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Jeporis. Connors. Costello. Codham. Crox. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durant. Hickman. Kelly. Long. Minoukian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Pelashy. Palumba. Panee, uh, Panetta, I apologize. Panico. Paulenteng. Rafknic. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Shelkowski. Spencer. Straznik. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. Forty-six to zero.
Article 11 has passed unanimously. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 12 for consideration to see if the town will vote to authorize an amount to be expended from each of the revolving funds listed below and authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 19, 2018 as Section 405.00, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2025. Saugus Senior Center Programs and Activities, Saugus Senior Center Lunch Program, Water System Cross-Connection Program, Town of Saugus Compost Program, and Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities. The Finance Committee's recommendation was to expend, to authorize an amount to be expended from each of the revolving funds listed below and authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 9, 2018 as Section 405, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2025. For the Saugus Senior Center Programs and Activities, $50,000. Saugus Senior Center Lunch Program, $25,000. Water System Cross-Connection Program, $35,000. Town of Saugus Compost Program, $50,000. And Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities, $195,000. Do I have a second on Article 12? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is just a vote that we take annually, and this is basically what it says. Town Meeting has to authorize the maximum amount to be expended, expended out of these revolving accounts. Revolving accounts are monies in, monies out that revolve within that account. Some of you that have been around for a while probably remember, maybe seven or eight years ago, where we used to actually have to reauthorize the revolving accounts each year and then expenditures. Now, we just do the expenditures in the account annually, so you'll see this every single year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 12? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town authorize the following amounts from each of the revolving funds listed below and authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 9, 2018 as Section 405, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2025. Saugus Senior Center Programs and Activities, $50,000. Saugus Senior Center Lunch Programs, $25,000. Water System Cross-Connection Programs, $35,000. Town of Saugus Compost Program, $50,000. And Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities, $195,000. All in favor of their recommendation as stated by the Finance Committee? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, hearing none, Article 12 has passed. As a courtesy of the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 14 for consideration to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow a certain amount at 0% interest from the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program for the purpose of designing and constructing improvements to water pipelines or to take any other action relative thereto. The recommendation of the Finance Committee was that the town authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of $968,800 at 0% interest from the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program for the purpose of designing and constructing improvements to water pipelines or to take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a second on Article 14? Discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this again is something that we do annually, trying to take, make sure that we take every opportunity and advantage of the special lending programs that are out from the state. And this is the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, and it's a local water system assistance program, and this is part of our capital improvement that we do within our water system, with water main replacement throughout the town annually. We generally do design work, spend a year in doing design work, and then the next year, we have specs and documents that go out to bid, and we implement those projects and construction in the following year. So, the year that we're doing construction, we're generally working on design work for the next year that's upcoming. So, this is money borrowed under the 0% interest so that we can continue to move forward with our vendors and putting together programs with replacing the water main. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of $968,800 at 0% interest from the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program for the purpose of designing and constructing improvements to water pipelines or to take any other action relative thereto, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Article 14 has passed. As a courtesy of the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 15 for consideration to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for construction and reconstruction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise or to take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommended the town appropriate the sum of $350,000 for construction and reconstruction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, with the source of funding being July 1, 2023 Certified Free Cash. Do I have a second on Article 15? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a request from the DPW with, looking at $350,000 from Certified Free Cash. Depending on what the cost comes in, there are some unaccepted roadways here that are listed that he's planning or we're planning to move forward with. Obviously, if the prices come in higher, we'd do less. If the prices come in lower, then we try to do more. Annually, we've been allocating a little bit of money each year to try to, you know, repair and pave roadway and sidewalks on some of the unaccepted roadways. I think one of the positive things this year that's really big is that I think important for, I think, trying to deliver services to the residents is we're doing approximately $3.2 million in roadwork this year, which is, far exceeds the amount that we've done in past years. We're generally around 700 or 800,000 in roadwork. This year, we're at 3.2, and that includes, you know, Chapter 90, this allocation, as well as state grant funding. As you probably, most of you have traveled up Water Street and Walnut and up in that area, so that, that project is moving forward, almost, you know, complete, and we'll be moving forward over the summer with some of the paving, which would include some of these roadways if, if town meeting is supportive of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 15? Yes, Mr. Costello.
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. I just have a couple of questions I want to ask with regard to this. I commend the DPW, first of all, for the work that they've done in the last few weeks with regard to patching up all the potholes that are around the city, in the town, rather. But I do notice that one of the things that we do, which I commend, and it's, I think it's, unfortunately, it's cost effective, but it is, it is effective, which is when we have a street that is in pretty bad shape, we've been sectioning it and repaving it entirely. And I'm just curious, are we going to continue with that program with some of this funds and with Chapter 90 funds? Because we still have a lot of, a lot of roads and a lot of streets that are in pretty bad shape, and this winter didn't do us any favors despite the lack of snow. So that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To address that question from the town meeting member, there's actually a specific program for certain length of roadway and doing that patchwork, so to speak, of looking at the worst part of roadways and doing that. That's, we get funding through grant money from the state that allows us to do that, and it specifically can only be used for a certain linear footage to do that. And it's been very effective. I know people look at it and say, well, why didn't they do the whole street? But that's part of what the money is, and we look at doing that annually, and that is part of our paving program. So we'll continue to do that and use those funds effectively. The state has found that that's, I guess, really effective with, with other cities and towns trying to deal with certain areas that might have a ton of potholes or decaying or breakdown of the roadway. So again, we'll continue to do that. Obviously, you can't pave everything all the time, and I think for a lot of years, we had sort of a mentality that Chapter 90 is supposed to pay for all the roadways, and, and the state's supposed to pay for all the maintenance of the, and repaving the roadways. That Chapter 90 is a supplement. So in other words, you're supposed to have your own annual budget that you're allocating money each year for. And just, you know, I think part of it, good and bad, is that we also prioritize sidewalks. There's a certain percentage out of the Chapter 90 that generally, it can be used for sidewalks, but generally would have been used for roadways that's allocated through a bylaw here to put towards sidewalks. And I think that that's something that went on before my administration where there was so many sidewalks that were in disarray and no, you know, handicap accessible. So they, I think that was very effective at being able to, you know, identify and put in tons of ADA compliant sidewalks and crosswalks. But we'll continue to try to look at it. We'll continue to, you know, look. We have a master plan that we work off of, and some roadways get worse. And sometimes with the winter, just so you understand that, with the less snow, you only have a couple of inches, the plows are digging up the roads, more so if you had like a layer of snow and ice down, and it was four or five inches. So sometimes the roads actually take more of a beating, so to speak, with less snow. So, but we'll continue to do that, and we'll also take advantage of that program as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 15? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate the sum of $350,000 for construction and reconstruction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, with the source of funding being July 1, 2023 Certified Free Cash, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, Article 15 has passed. All right. Again, just to make sure we're not backvoting on this a couple of years from now. On Article, backing up for a second, Article 14, I know I asked for a vote to borrow the sum of $968,800 at 0% interest from the MWRA Local Pipeline Assistance Program for the purpose of designing, reconstructing water pipelines or to take any other action relative thereto. And we did that by a voice vote, and there was nobody speaking in opposition to it. But just to reaffirm the, the collectiveness of that vote, if you would, I'm going to ask for a show of hands, and I'll ask the tellers to take the count. So on Article 14, backing up to that, all in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen be allowed to borrow the sum of $968,800 at 0% interest from the Local Pipeline Assistance Program for the purpose of designing and reconstructing and constructing improvements to water pipelines, please signify by raising your right hand. And if the tellers would take the count? Twenty-one, twenty-four. Any opposed? Please raise your hand for your right hand. Okay, seeing none. All right, so once again, Article 14 has passed, but now probably more officially. And thank you for that.
And just to add that, Mr. Moderator, so we can talk offline, I think part of it is just to make sure that there's no objections, and it may be the way we actually take notes, and we can, Wendy and I can talk with both ears, because it may be the way that we take the minutes to say that there were no objections when asked. And I think you probably can do a verbal and then say, is there any objections? And if nobody objects, as long as that's in the minutes, I think that satisfies them. But we can, we can talk about that, because I think doing a roll call every time might sort of get time consuming as well. But we're just trying to follow what's in the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, as a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Federico moves Article 16 for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails, including payment of costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise or to take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee voted to recommend the town appropriate the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails, including payment of costs incidental or related thereto. The source of funding is the July 1, 2023 Certified Free Cash. Do I have a second on Article 16? Article 16 moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. This is annually, we've been, the DPW's been putting together guardrails that are either needed as new projects or ones that need a repair. And this is 150,000, looking at a Certified Free Cash to continue that this year. We do have accidents, the police do reports, and we have a, a process and a policy in place that we try to collect from the insurance companies when there is damage. But a lot of guardrails that get hit, we don't have, they're hit and runs and with property damage, or they just might be old or areas that need new guardrails. And so annually, you voted on this the last few years, the DPW's identified certain areas and continues to do that, and that would be money going towards that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 16? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails, including payment of costs incidental or related thereto, with the source of funding being July 1, 2023 Certified Free Cash, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Article 16 has passed. Seeing that we don't have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on Article 17, at this time, I would take, entertain a motion to take Article 18 out of order? You have a motion to make take Article 18 out of order? Any second? Seconded. All right, as a courtesy, let me see, who is, Article 18 is, as a courtesy to the Board of Health, Mr. Federico moves Article 18 for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws by adding the following section, 514A. 514A, Board of Health Solid Waste Facility Environmental Performance Standards. Section 1, preamble, this section establishes environmental performance standards for solid waste facilities subject to Board of Health enforcement. Section 2, purpose, the purpose of this section is to protect the rights of the people of Saugus to clean air and water guaranteed by Article 97 of the Articles of Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution. Section 3, authority, this section is adopted pursuant to the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution, Article 89 of the Articles of Amendment in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31. Section 4, solid waste facility shall not be operated in a manner to cause any dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable hazard, noise, or vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or other objectionable pollution, glare, conditions conducive to breeding of insects, rodents, or other vermin, substances, conditions, or elements to an extent so as to adversely affect nearby neighborhoods. Minimal acceptable standard shall be as follows. A, emissions shall be effectively confined within any building or controlled to prevent any nuisance, hazard, or other disturbance from being perceptible without the use of instruments at any lot line or the site location. B, all use and storage of flammable materials shall be confined and maintained in accordance with the strict provisions set forth by, forth by the chief of the fire department acting in accordance with duly established fire prevention regulations, codes, and standards. C, any emission of visible smoke shall meet the then current color standards of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Division of Air Pollution, and in any event, no emission of smoke shall be greater than 10% opacity. D, there shall be no emission of ash that can cause damage to the health of humans, animals, or vegetation, or can cause excessive soiling. In no event shall emissions of any solid or liquid particles in concentrations exceeding .2 grams per cubic foot of conveying gas or air be permitted. E, the minimum permissible sound pressure level at the closest residential lot line shall not exceed more than 10 decibels over background levels at any time, and in no event shall sound pressure levels exceed 69 decibels between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and 61 decibels between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM as measured on a frequency band of 125 cycles per second using a general purpose sound level meter complying with the provisions of the American National Standards Institute. Properly calibrated and operated on the AWAY, AWAYing network, this regulation shall not apply to transient noises of moving vehicles, noises of safety signals and warning devices, noises emanating from temporary construction and maintenance activities between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. F, no direct or sky reflected glare, whether from floodlights or from high temperature processes, shall be permitted when it is determined to be hazardous to human health and welfare or obnoxious. This regulation shall not apply to street lighting or other utilities that are essential for public safety. G, the Board of Health may require such information, data, and testing to be performed and supplied at the owner's or developer's expense in order to determine the findings of compliance. Section 5, violations, any violation of this section shall be punished by a fine of $300 per violation. Each day of violation shall constitute a new and separate violation submitted by the Board of Health. Do I have a second on Article 18? Article 18 moved and seconded. Discussion? Mr. Vasapoli.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, this is an article that proposes to add to our town bylaws a solid waste facility environmental performance standards. And what it does is it essentially establishes standards for solid waste facilities in the Town of Saugus, and the purpose is to protect the rights of the people of Town of Saugus with respect to clean air and water. This article was originally passed by town meeting in 2014. It was drafted by our environmental legal counsel, Judge Hyler, who represents the town on environmental matters. As you may know, anytime we adopt a town bylaw, it has to be approved by the Attorney General's Office, the municipal law unit. The municipal law unit, the Attorney General's Office, did review this bylaw and made several comments with respect to the legality of this bylaw. Towns can make reasonable regulations with respect to solid waste facilities, but they can't be more strict than the DEP regulations because the DEP has the state authority over solid waste facilities. So as a result of their comments, Attorney Hyler and his office revised the bylaw, incorporated the comments by the Attorney General's Office, and submitted this draft to you. So I would suggest that this bylaw is endorsed by the Board of Health, it incorporates the recommendation of municipal law unit, and Judge Hyler and myself are confident that the Attorney General's Office with these changes will approve this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasapoli. Any further discussion on Article 18? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for the question. I'm not going to read it again. I'm sorry, Mr. Serino?
Just quickly, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, the, the article was put together back in 2014 by Board of Health and with their, their attorney. And back at that time, they were exceeding fine limits and decimal points for the noise and smoke. So basically, they just, this is revised to bring it back into line with, with the DEP requires. So I don't think there'll be a problem this time at the AG's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. Yes, Mr. Straznick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rob Straznick, Precinct 9. Two questions, if I may. First, are the current solid waste activities currently in compliance with what's being proposed? And secondly, is there anything in this proposal that is in conflict with any current contractual obligations with the solid waste provider?
Thank you, Mr. Straznick.
I can only respond to that question by saying that our environmental counsel recommended it. I'm not aware of whether or not they're in compliance now. I'm not aware of whether or not they're in compliance now. I couldn't answer that question. But this is consistent with what state law and case law would authorize us to adopt in terms of a bylaw without violating the DEP regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Vasapoli.
Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Manugian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I do wish someone from the Board of Health was here. And as a, I'd also like to make the point that going forward, I wish that someone from the Finance Committee would be here to discuss their recommendations. It's always been a tradition that the Finance Committee has been present at Town Meeting, but that's another situation. In answer to the question from my colleague from Precinct 9, the selectman pointed out there were two flaws. One, the original fine was 1,000. The state law says it should be 300. That's been corrected. And the other issue was the opacity was too generous and exceeded DEP regulations. And that's been brought into line with DEP. But what's important in this is paragraph G, in my opinion. The Board of Health may require such information, data, and testing to be performed and supplied at the owners or developers' expense in order to determine the findings of compliance. That means that when there is a loud noise that goes into your neighborhood, the Board of Health can kick and scream all they want, but without a bylaw that requires, that allows them to require testing and further evaluation, they don't have any authority. The Chapter 111 authorizes the Board of Health to promulgate reasonable health regulations. This bylaw, again, was already voted, as Town Council points out, in 2014. This bylaw would allow our Board of Health to further promulgate regulations to implement it. So I would strongly recommend that you vote for this because as things get older and break, they become more of a nuisance, and we therefore need this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian. Any further discussion on Article 18?
Bill Brown, Precinct 6. Good evening, everyone. I'm a little confused by Town Council's statement. I'm not sure. You said that changes were not necessary, or the changes are necessary. Have they been made into this article? What is different in this article than from what the state requires? I'd just like to, I'd just like to get an idea of how much more we're, we're going above and beyond what the state requires.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. In response to that question, the changes were incorporated into the latest draft. The changes did not exceed what the regulations of DEP are. And that's what the Attorney General pointed out. As a previous speaker had suggested, one of the changes was the fine, the daily fine. In the original draft, it said $1,000 a day when there's a state statute that says you can only have $300 per day. There was also a question about the decibels to further define the hours of the decibels. There are different hours for nighttime and different hours for daytime. So that was further clarified. But in total, the recommendations of the Attorney General were fully implemented. I don't think it was more stringent. I think it was just further defining what our bylaw said to make it clear as opposed to being more stringent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasapoli. Any further discussion on Article 18? Oh, yes, Ms. Panetta.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deborah Panetta, 1 Bellevue Street. I think this is a very important article, and I'm glad that it's coming back before Town Meeting this evening. Section 2, protect the rights of the people of Saugus to clean air and water. Very important. Section 4 is going to protect you and your constituents against noise or vibration, dust, odor, or other objectionable pollution, conditions conducive to breeding of insects, rodents, or other vermin. Very important article. We need to pass this to give the Board of Health some teeth to protect all of us, all of the constituents, all of the residents in Saugus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Any further discussion on Article 18?
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. I would just like to reaffirm what the Chairman of our Board of Selectmen just said. This is to protect every single citizen in the town of Saugus from these kind of incursions onto our best health interests. And I ask my colleagues here tonight to vote unanimously in support of this. Give our Board of Health the necessary tools to do their job and address these sorts of violations and incursions upon our well-being and our public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Any further discussion on Article 18? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the question. All in favor of amending the town bylaws by adding Section 514A, as previously read into the record and recommended by the Saugus Board of Health? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right. Given that there is a, both sides here, I'm going to ask for a hand vote and if the tellers would take the count. So all in favor of the Board of Health recommendation to change the bylaws, please signify by raising your right hand.
24.
20?
24.
Okay. And all opposed? Please raise your right hand. All right, so 44 to 1. Article 18 has passed. All right, seeing that we don't have, we're awaiting recommendations from the Finance Committee on Articles 19 through 21. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to take Articles 22 through 27 out of order. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of taking Articles 22 to 27 out of order at this time? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right. As a courtesy, let's see. Article 22, I'm sorry. Mr. Pallante moves Article 22 for consideration to see if Saugus Town Meeting will vote to establish an 11-person charter review committee. The role of the charter review committee is to review the existing Saugus Town Charter and recommend updates or amendments, if applicable, for consideration for the betterment and benefit of the town of Saugus. This 11-person committee shall include the following. 10 members of Town Meeting, one from each of the 10 precincts appointed by lottery, one selectman appointed by lottery. The lottery will consist of Town Meeting members and selectmen that are interested in serving on the committee. No committee member shall be employed by the town of Saugus during their appointment except for a selectman. All meetings will be public, and notice will be posted on the town's website at least 48 hours prior for each meeting. This committee does not have a budget, and recommendations of the committee are non-binding. The charter review committee will report back to Town Meeting with an initial report and any recommendations of the 2025 Annual Town Meeting and shall be an ongoing committee that will regularly meet during the year to review the Saugus Charter. Members shall be appointed and reappointed on an annual basis, this by Town Meeting, submitted by Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, Matt Pallante. And I do have from the Town Council on Article, in his letter on the warrant, it's his opinion that the 33 articles contained are legal with respect to their form, and Town Meeting is within its authority to act on the articles with the following qualifications. On Article 22 is an article to establish an 11-person charter review committee. The article does not request an appropriation of funds, and the article provides that the recommendations of the committee are non-binding. There is a statutory binding legal process for the revision of a town charter under Mass. General Law's Chapter 43B. This process requires a petition from a percentage of registered voters and a submission of the question of the voters of revising the charter and an election of a charter commission. So with that, I have Article, do I have a second on Article 24? On Article, sorry, 22? All right, Article 22 is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Pallante?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Matthew Pallante, Precinct 2. Charter review is essential. It provides an opportunity to assess and improve the functioning of our government. Saugus has grown in population, and technology has changed since the charter was drafted in 1943. Societal needs, demographics, and governance practices evolve. A charter review ensures that the town's governing documents remain current and relevant by addressing any necessary adjustments. To be clear, this is not to recommend town versus city. This is simply to make recommendations on potential updates that will benefit the residents. A review will enable our town to evaluate our existing document. If inefficiencies and limitations are identified, revisions can lead to more effective and streamlined operations. A charter review is a vital tool for maintaining a well-functioning local government, adapting to changing circumstances, and enhancing the overall quality for all the residents. Frequent reviews ensure that the charter remains effective and aligned with the community's changing dynamics. Point of reference, there are some towns that review their charter and bylaws annual, every five years. Winthrop bylaws and charter review every five years. Mashpee, every 10 years, bylaws every five years. Watertown, they do a 10-year review. Natick, they do a bylaw and charter review every five years. Braintree, every five years. Our last amendment was Chapter 51, Acts of 2013. It was to change something in Chapter 17. There was another one in 2011 and 2012. Before that, the last amendment change was in 2002. There are many people in this room that believe a review is necessary. these are quotes from the advocate in Lin item,
Yeah, you really, you can't quote on behalf, even though it may have been in the paper, you can't quote on behalf of other members. They can speak for themselves.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I apologize. Okay, some of the changes that some Town Meeting members and select board and school committee members have suggested were outdated language and some references to committee appointments, I'm sorry, committee appointment requirements, conflict of interest law to apply equally to all elected town officials, staggered elections. There were some minor revisions and amendments that can be made through Town Meeting with no expense to taxpayers. Inclusion of standing Town Meeting Charter Committee that would review our charter periodically was another change that somebody had mentioned. And there was one person who said, "I do believe there should be a committee established to review and make updates to the charter as necessary through the Town Meeting process." So these are all of you said these things. Last year during the campaign and the election, there were a lot of noes, people on the no side, and they all said that we can do this review through this process right here. So that's why I put this article in. One last thing I'd like to say is that vote only lost by 193 votes. 2,276 people voted yes for a charter commission. 2,469 voted no. And there were 311 blanks. So it's a difference of 193 people. So half of the people that voted, pretty much, last election wanted to see a review, at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Any further discussion on Article 22?
I'm reading this, and one of the things that I see on this is that no town employees would be eligible for this committee, and I'm wondering why. If I'm reading it right, I just, I'd just like to find out if I'm reading that correctly. Are town employees eligible to be sitting on this review committee? No?
As it's worded, no.
The answer is no. Why would that be? I don't understand why they, they can't sit on this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Pallante?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to keep it simple, because it may impact their job.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Manugian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. My colleague from Precinct 6 raises a concern that I've raised to the author. The way I read this, 18 people in this body would not be able to serve on this committee. You know, a town employee is defined as anyone, according to the state, that's on a board or a commission. In Precinct 1, three people would be ruled out. Precinct 2, three people would be, you go on and on. So if you are on the planning board, or Board of Appeals, you are considered an employee of the town. The only people that are considered employees of the town are Town Meeting members. But this argument came up back in 2009 at a charter proposal, and a point was made because there was a prohibition on town employees serving in government. And a point was raised that you could serve at that time in Iraq, come back here, become a fireman or a policeman, and you wouldn't be able to run for office. I'm sure there are veterans in this room. We honor veterans at every meeting, thanks to the moderator. That's my concern, that we are preventing people that are elected, when they're elected, their constituents know that they're town employees. That's a concern that I have. In terms of charter review, yeah, we can all do it. I have a proposal before you this evening. Anyone can put in a proposal. In terms of, you mentioned staggered elections. The voters have rejected it twice. It's viable. It could still go on the ballot at any time. It does not require a It does not require a charter review committee to put that back on the ballot. The selectmen can do it with a, with a majority vote. But the other issues that you raise can be proposed at town meeting, but my primary concern is, is stopping eighteen people in this body from serving on this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Minougan. Any further discussion on article twenty-two? Mr. Whitcomb?
Andrew Whitcomb, two twelve Essex Street, apartment one oh two. Good to see all of you tonight. Uh, I'd first like to echo everything Ms. Minougan said. He brought up some great, oop, I'm sorry, I forget, you have to be on top of the mics here. Uh, two twelve Essex Street, apartment one oh two, for the record. I'd like to echo everything Ms. Minougan said. I'd also like to add that we have a process in the charter for this kind of thing, and we went through it a few months ago, a hundred and ninety-three votes. There are people in this room that are members of town meeting that would have been elected to serve on that charter had it passed on that review committee that, under this article, wouldn't be eligible to serve in this process. That doesn't make any sense to me. I understand the appearance of a conflict of interest, but for a non-binding committee, I, I don't understand how that makes sense. You can't say that a committee who puts out non-binding proposals could have a conflict of interest, because in that sense, you guys could just vote down anything that would be conflicted. I mean, I guess, you know, I want to see changes made to the charter. I said that months ago. There are committees listed in there that don't exist anymore. We can remove those, but I, I don't see the point in limiting the people that can look at that. You know, it doesn't matter if it's eighteen people in this room or one. Town meeting members are elected to represent their districts. They're elected to act on behalf of the town and in their best interests. If we're going to have members look at the charter and propose revisions, I don't support anything that would, that would prevent any of those members from doing so. That's my two cents. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Any further discussion on article twenty-two? Mr. Palanti?
Just to be clear, this isn't, this isn't anything against people who work in the town. This was, you know, as a newcomer here to town meeting, excuse me. Um, you know, this was my first time, last year, that campaign was my first time being involved in politics in Saugus, and as everybody in this room knows, it was, it was a pretty contentious race, and there was a lot of different things said. And being new, it just makes sense to me, um, you know, to try to have the most unbiased committee we can have. Now, I'm not saying that eighteen people that work for the town would be biased. I'm simply just trying to remove any possibility of it. Mr. Minougan mentioned there was three people in precinct two. There's only two people that work for the town precinct two. I'm not sure if eighteen is the actual number, but even if it is, it still leaves thirty-two people to be on a ten-town meeting member committee and one select board member. So again, I just wanted to be clear. You know, I, I work for a city as well. Like, I, I don't see anything wrong with town meeting members working for the town. Again, I'm just trying to reiterate that I was just trying to create the most fair and impartial committee possible, and I thought this was a good way to do it as well as having it done by lottery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palanti. Any further discussion on article twenty-two? Mr. Long? You got long enough legs, you can do this.
Robert Long, precinct four, Bennett Avenue. When I first saw this article, I was rather startled, since we had had a, an election last fall, that the, even though there was certain closeness, we did have the election, we had a pretty thorough discussion. I know I was involved in a, a program, a TV program, talking about town meeting. I know that the opposition was also, had a program the same week. This issue has been, has already been decided. At any time you want to have a meeting and discuss charter, two members from precinct ten this, this spring reserved the room over at the library. They put on our website that they were going to have a meeting regarding the town, town meeting and how the operation of it and everything, and they went ahead and did it. They did it not as appointed members of anything, they just went ahead and did it. Apparently it was successful. In this particular instance, though, as I said, this has already been decided. This coming fall, or actually through the summer, we're going to see some horrendous advertisement. We're going to be battered with everything that's going to be going on locally, I mean nationally rather. Don't forget, we also have some state elections, too. As I say, we don't need to have a committee to do this. And by the way, when you're talking about town employees, I worked, you know, I work, I'm on the planning board now, so I guess I would be exempt from this also. So I, I think the proper thing to do at this point in time is to lay it aside, and in that case, in that situation, I make a motion to refer it back to the petitioner. And I'll let my motion stand at that. I think that's enough, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion before us to refer article twenty-two back to the maker. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion to refer, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
I just have a question to town council. Appointed members of...
One second.
The question to town councils, the maker of the article said there's only two from precinct two, but there's a member that's on the Board of Appeals from precinct two. It's my understanding that the Ethics Commission, the chapter two sixty-eight A defines municipal employee as serving on a board, and it's my understanding that board members have to take that conflict of interest test and pass that test in order to serve. So am I correct in saying that a municipal employee can also, as, as the previous member of precinct nine pointed out on the planning board, that they are municipal employees? And this does not distinguish that, does it?
Thank you, Ms. Minougan. John?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, the conflict of interest law defines municipal employees as any appointed, elected, paid, non-paid member. So whether you're on a board, whether you're a town employee, is a paid employee, you would all be considered municipal employees for the purpose of the conflict of interest law and would apply under this bylaw, or this committee, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Vespoli. All right, again, we do, hold on, we do have a vote before us at the moment, which is to refer the article back to the maker. It's been seconded. So all in favor of referring the article back to the maker signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, once again, I'll call for just a show of hands. All in favor of referring it back to the maker signify by raising your right hand?
Sixteen.
Twelve.
All opposed signify by raising your right hand?
Five.
One.
So thirty-nine to six, the article is referred back to the maker, article twenty-two. As a courtesy, um, no, not as a courtesy, one second. All right, again, Mr. Palanti moves article twenty-three for consideration. To see if Saugus Town Meeting will vote to establish a ten-person community engagement committee. The purpose of the committee is to generate more participation of community members in civic matters and increase civic engagement through educational forums and existing town public events. This ten-person committee shall include the following: ten members of town meeting, one from each of the ten precincts, appointed by the moderator. This committee does not have a budget, and recommendations of the committee are non-binding. The committee engagement committee will meet bi-monthly and will participate in two public events, example, table at Founder's Day, and will hold one educational forum prior to the two thousand twenty-five annual town meeting. All meetings will be public, and notice will be posted on the town's website at least forty-eight hours prior to each meeting, submitted by town meeting member precinct two, Matt Palanti. Do I have a second on article twenty-three? All right, article twenty-three, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Palanti? Your first option.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, Matthew Palanti, precinct two. This is a pretty, I was going to say simple article, but I guess nothing around here is simple. This is just to create a community engagement committee. The idea behind it is to generate more civic involvement and engagement from town meeting with the community. You know, we voted, you know, there was a big, big call to keep Saugus a town, which I'm all for keeping Saugus a town. I'd like Saugus to feel like a town, feel more like a community. So the idea behind this committee is to, is to have more town meetings, members sort of engage in the community. As I mentioned in the article, one of the events would be like having a table at Founder's Day, just more interaction with the community, and then as well as holding one forum, educational forum for residents, similar to the ones that Mr. Minougan put on for the new town meeting members. Just to educate, I spoke to a lot of residents who didn't know how, what the charter was, didn't know how the government worked, didn't really know much about our town, and so this, you know, is, is an opportunity to, you know, create something different around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palanti. Any further discussion on article twenty-three? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the question. Yes, Mr. Long, sorry.
I move to refer back to the maker.
All right, we have a motion on article twenty-three to refer it back to the maker. Do I have a second? Moved and seconded? All in favor of referring article twenty-three back to the maker signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Again, if I could call on my tellers, all in favor of moving article twenty-three, referring article twenty-three back to the maker, if you would, just raise your right hand, and the tellers will take the count.
Nine.
Eleven.
All opposed to referring article twenty-three back to the maker, please raise your right hand.
Eleven.
Okay, the article to refer has failed, so we're back to any further discussion on article twenty-three. Mr. Long?
I, I made the motion to refer, because frankly, if people want to get together, again, there's a community room over at the library, but to make this an official committee of the town meeting, I think is going above and beyond what we really need here in Saugus. If people don't think that this town government is under discussion at any time, then obviously you don't get around this town very much, because I hear it constantly, pros, cons, whatever. You really don't need a community discussion group. By the way, have, take a look at this, this group right here. How many are we short tonight? Four?
Yes.
Four, okay. This is representative town meeting. We have four missing out of fifty. Try to look at some of our neighboring communities, like Linfield, which had to reduce their quorum requirement because they were not getting the turnout over there. Of course, they may be more of a drive-in, park, sleep, get up in the morning, go up, but not here in Saugus. Saugus is a very active town. As I say, anytime any group of people want to get together and discuss this town and what they'd like to present to town meeting, remember, the annual requires only ten signatures on an article to put it here for a discussion now, like tonight. Anytime you want to get together, fine, put it out on the, on the town website that you want to have a meeting over at the library. It, you know, I don't think they charge, I was asking members from precinct ten if they had to pay for it when they were doing the instructional course on town meeting. Well, go meet at Dunkin' Donuts, you know, I mean, do whatever you want. But I don't think that this is really the time, place, or whatever, to have a committee, a town meeting committee, put together to, you know, to discuss what? What would be, who's going to form your agenda, by the way? What would be your agenda? The moderator would have to name people, first named person, and that he names as temporary chairman until the, a group gets together and decides for themselves who's going to chair their meeting. But as I say, just, there's a long, maybe it's too long, a person involved here in town government. If you, if you don't know what's going on, you live in this town, then you are never going to come forward to find out otherwise. So I'm sorry that my motion failed, but let's see what happens to the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any further discussion on article twenty-three? Mr. Rosetti?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I hesitate to disagree with my colleague from precinct nine. He is my senior, so I don't like disagreeing with him. But anything that promotes further engagement from town meeting in town, I think is a good thing. This doesn't cost us anything, other than the fact that it adds an extra job to the moderator, but I think it's a good thing. Having a town meeting table at Founder's Day, I think, would be a great idea. It might encourage more people to get involved. I, I don't see any downside to doing this. It's a non-binding committee. It doesn't cost anything. Why not? What's the downside? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosetti. And for clarification, the previous speaker is now your colleague from precinct four. All right, any further discussion on article twenty-three? Yes, Mr. Federico?
Frank Federico, precinct seven. In order for any government body to function, we need the participation of the residents, of the voters. It's been a dwindling effect on voter turnout as far as agenda. I mean, I can't speak to it, Ms., my colleague from precinct three, two, has, has mentioned, has brought the article forward, rather. But if this does go forward, I would like to see things on the agenda such as engaging residents to come out and actually vote, to participate, maybe run for town meeting, maybe apply for some of the boards in the town. As, as some have said, there is really no downside, there's no cost to this, there's no, there's no reason really to object to it, in my opinion. I mean, if we can get residents more involved in our community, it will only better our town, and I think that's what's trying to be put forth by this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Federico. Any further discussion on article twenty- Any further discussion on Article twenty-three? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of town meeting establishing a ten-person Community Engagement Committee? Purpose of the committee to generate more participation of community members in civic matters and increase civic engagement through educational forums and existing town public events. This ten-person committee shall include ten members of town meeting, one from each of the ten precincts, appointed by the moderator. This committee does not have a budget and recommendations of the committee are non-binding. The Committee Engagement Committee will meet bimonthly and participate in two public events and will hold one educational forum prior to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. All meetings will be public and notice will be posted on the town's website at least forty-eight hours prior to each meeting. All in favor of forming this committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And again, if I'm gonna call on my tellers, if we would, all in favor of supporting this committee, of forming this committee, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, please signify by raising your right hand. So with a vote of twenty-one to nineteen, Article twenty-three has passed. What's that? Um, yeah, apparently, but there's no requirement. All right, Mr. Manugian moves Article twenty-four for consideration. To see if the Saugus Town Meeting will vote to form a committee to investigate the feasibility of registering and inspecting apartments within the town of Saugus. Said committee will examine the process used in at least two other nearby communities to register and inspect apartments. Said committee will produce a report by the 2025 Annual Town Meeting that may include a bylaw proposal that would identify procedures, costs associated with the registration inspection process, and recommendations for implementation. Said committee will include three town meeting members, one selectman appointed by the chairperson of the selectman, and the manager or his designee, submitted by Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten, Peter Manugian. Do I have a second on Article twenty-four? Article twenty-four moved and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Manugian?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. If I could have the tellers, we do have a handout for this article, if you could just pass those along. Thank you very much.
We're keeping you guys busy tonight.
with State Sanitary Code, 105 CMR 410, basically with proliferation of apartments in Route One and throughout town, and more to come. Saugus does not have a process in place to have a certificate of fitness every time a new tenancy occurs. I mean, tenancy can be defined as when somebody signs a lease, or a tenant will, or buys a property, buys a home. Those of you that have been involved in home sales, or selling a home, or buying a home, know that there has to be a smoke certificate, and now it includes a carbon monoxide approval as well by the fire department. That, in all the communities that surround Saugus, Malden, Everett, Revere, Lynn, Winthrop, they, every time an apartment is leased out, a certificate of fitness is required. What this article would do is not create that, but it would study the process and what would fit Saugus. It's different in every city how they do it, and every other community that has as many apartments, has many apartments. And, you know, we've talked a lot about the West Side Fire Station, and the town's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars investigating that, because people care about public health and public safety. Well, this is a public health and public safety issue. The letter that you have before you from the fire chief, I obtained today, Peter, I hope this email finds you well. Thank you, Mike, I do feel well. "Thank you for your interest in the subject of inspecting apartments upon renewal of leases. This is a common practice in many communities around the metro Boston area. It has been something that has been discussed by our fire prevention team for some time. I hope town meeting votes to support Article twenty-four and establish a committee to study this topic. If Article twenty-four passes, I will gladly obtain the best practices from the fire prevention divisions throughout the area and share them forthwith. I believe that inspecting apartments upon a transfer of a lease would be an appropriate measure to ensure proper life safety codes and standards are met at the beginning of each new lease." I also spoke with the, the health agent, Mr. Frelick. He's doing it for Section Eight apartments. Section Eight is that federally subsidized program that assists renters, and he's often called to go to those apartments where a Section Eight applicant is seeking tenancy. It's, he charges a fifty-dollar fee. That's the same fee that Revere charges, by the way. So my question is, why is it that the, a Section Eight applicant has a higher level of protection from the town than someone that is not on a government subsidy? So in terms of treating everyone the same, it makes sense. The other thing is, it protects landlords. Oftentimes, there's frivolous complaints that landlords, by disgruntled tenants, about conditions that were not there when the apartment was rented. There should be a statement of condition when it is rented, but if there is also a certificate of fitness, then the landlord would have that benefit of avoiding frivolous Certain things besides smoke detectors that would be looked at would be the temperature of the hot water, whether or not the stove has anchors on the back legs. A child was scalded once when he pulled the door down, stepped on it while water was boiling. There's a number of things, windows, locks. And I, I will conclude by mentioning Stephen Clayne, who in January 2011 lost his life on Lincoln Avenue, and, in a fire, on a third-floor apartment. And one of our firefighters was also injured, perhaps my colleague from Precinct Eight remembers that. And, you know, I don't know if an inspection would have prevented that death, but I know that an inspection going forward would protect the health and safety of tenants and their children. And town meeting has embraced mixed-use zoning and apartments up and down Route One. Again, this is not, you're not adopting it, you're allowing a committee of town meeting members and a designee from the town manager's office to, to study the issue, and see if it's something that we should do, and if we do it, what would it look like? And we'd report back, it would report back to town meeting by next year, and then you could make that choice, and all the meetings, of course, would be public and so forth. So it's just to form a committee, and hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian. Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Yes, Ms. Whitcomb.
Hi, Maureen Whitcomb, one twenty, uh, I'm sorry, 212 Essex Street, Precinct Four. I just have a question for Peter. I am in favor of this, and I, I am with Saugus Housing on the Board of Directors. Unfortunately, I would just want a little bit more clarification, because we have so many units, we would hate to tie up the fire department, we realize this is a committee, but we'd hate to tie up the fire department, or we have rent renewals, these, each building we have renews their rent once a year, which the staff that we have there at Housing is very good about keeping those buildings maintained and up to code. We replace the fire detect, the smoke detectors, fire detectors, the fire boards, we're constantly doing work on that. The other thing is, like, the rent renewals is mostly what I was, I was kinda trying to find out about. I can understand if it was a housing unit, if it was a private, even the Section Eights, and I'm totally in favor of this, but I just want a little bit more clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian.
It's a great, it's a great point that my colleague from Precinct Four raises, and I believe the Housing Authority may have an inspection process already in place. And so at the committee, as, as committee meetings, we would want to hear from your director, and if Saugus, if, if the committee chooses to put forth a bylaw, then certainly an exemption could be carved out for those places that already have their own inspection process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian. Yes, Mr. Cross.
Billy Cross, Precinct Eight, I'm captain on the fire department, and I do all these inspections. So the housing is, is different, the Housing Authority gets tested quarterly, they have a quarterly test, and then they have an annual test. So they're getting tested all the time, and, so they wouldn't fall under this, I don't think. I think what we're talking about here is like these apartment buildings that we're building. What happens is, they get built, we go in, we do an acceptance test. So we'll go in, we'll test every single device, we'll go through every single apartment, we'll test everything. Once that's done, we don't go back again until we have a fire, or, or we have an incident, or we have some type of problem. When we get inside there, then we, we can actually make changes. I'm definitely in favor of this, I hope you vote for it, it's, it'd be another tool in the toolbox for us. It'd be a lot of work, there's no doubt about it, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that when, when the time comes, but I, I, I hope you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Further discussion on Article twenty-four? Mr. Rosetti.
I serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Each, each meeting, we usually have several people come in on in-law apartments. Many years ago, we've had the discussion about in-law apartments and legalizing them. Problem was, in the past, people didn't legalize the apartments. We had a lot of large old homes that had ten rooms in them, this is back in the old People were encouraged to rent them out because people didn't have a place to live. So they rented them out. Over the years, they became established there. The problem is, you come forward fifty years, now you've got people renting places, and they may or may not qualify. Should they qualify? Absolutely. This is not a bad idea, but it's got a lot of flaws with it. One of the biggest flaws is, you're gonna need an extremely large number of inspectors to go out and do this. You're gonna have to determine what apartments are gonna qualify for this. Is it gonna be just new stuff? Is it gonna be all the existing? What penalties are you gonna have on people who don't do this? I think that's gonna be a big area, and that could be a major problem on how you handle that. If you have someone in some of the precincts in town, and it's been told that there are more than thousands of these units around town, in fact, one of our previous building inspectors estimated it to be more than five thousand illegal units. If you're gonna start inspecting all of those units, how many people is that gonna take? And if you find an illegal unit, then what do you do about it? Or if it doesn't pass inspection, what are the rules going to be? What do you have to do? So I think, you gotta, you got a lot of things to think about with this. It's not a bad idea, having some kind of standards, and yes, there should be standards on what people get, but I, I think it's a difficult problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosetti. Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Yes, Ms. Panetta.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deborah Panetta, One Bellevue Street. I was actually on that Illegal Apartment Committee with the Town Meeting Member from Precinct Two who just spoke, and there was some issues with the people coming forward. This here's a little different. I, as many people know, I, I work with property management, and I'm just gonna use one particular town as an example this evening, and that's the town of Winthrop. The town of Winthrop, what they do is they charge one hundred and fifty dollars, and they inspect apartments every four years. It's not when it's vacated, it's regardless, they wanna come in every four years, and if you have a big property, you can kinda space it out. Subsidized units are inspected yearly by the Housing Authority, in which they got their subsidy, so they would be exempt from this. But this committee here is to look at what's best for Saugus. I think it's a good idea, setting up a committee and taking a look at it. I think it's a good idea for safety purposes, as one town meeting member pointed out, I think it's a good idea, it's, it is additional revenue for the town, yes, well, we need more inspectors, probably, but that's something that the committee could take a look at. But it is being done in other communities, other neighboring communities, it's working well there, I think we should at least investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of Mr. Manugi, Article twenty-four, the proposal to form a committee to investigate the feasibility of registering and inspecting apartments within the town of Saugus. Said committee will examine the processes used in at least two other nearby communities to register and inspect apartments. Said committee will produce a report by the 2025 Annual Town Meeting that may include a bylaw proposal that would identify procedures, costs associated with the registration inspection process, and recommendations for implementation. And said committee will include three town meeting members, one selectman appointed by the chairperson of the selectman, and the manager or his designee. All in favor of Article twenty-four as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, again, I'll call on my tellers if we could, we'll just do a quick hand count here. All in favor of Article twenty-four as proposed, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. Yep, that's fine. All right, Article twenty-four has passed. All right, at this point, um, I'm gonna, the, the count was 42 to 1. For Article 24. Yep. We have three articles left that we could address tonight, Articles 25, 26, and 27. I know we have some people in our audience this evening. Are any of you folks here to speak on a particular article? Because we may not get to all three of these, but if you're here to speak on one, we can certainly try to push that one to the front. Anyone up back? Yes. What article would that be? Article 25? Okay, so that would be the next one coming up in order anyway. At this point, Mr. Manoukian moves Article 25 for consideration. To see if the Saugus Town Meeting will vote to form an Ashville, an Ash landfill closure committee that will consist of two selectmen appointed by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, two town meeting members from Precinct 10 appointed by the town moderator, and the town manager or his designee. The purpose of the committee is to identify timeframes for final closure, post-closure maintenance and monitoring, post-closure economic reuse possibilities, and other related issues that may be identified. All appointments to be made within two weeks of the adjournment of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. A representative of Wynn Waste will be invited by the moderator to participate as a non-voting member of the committee. Again, submitted by Town Meeting, Precinct 10 member, Peter Manoukian. So do I have a second on Article 25? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manoukian.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Peter Manoukian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. This committee is patented after the very successful Aggregate Closure Committee that was first proposed by former selectman Mike Kelleher and adopted by that Board of Selectmen, I believe, back in 2008 or 11. As a result of that, what was a reluctant, uh, commercial entity to participate quickly, not quickly, but eventually realized the economic benefits of, um, taking, having the property closed and redeveloped, and that process is now moving forward, and that will result in economic benefits not only for the, for the aggregate, but for Saugus. So part of this article would be to investigate potential economic uses of, of those acres, approximately 170 acres. There was in 1994, a special tax agreement that former town manager Ed Collins put into place that anticipated the landfill closing in 1996, and as such, he allowed for pennies-on-the-dollar type agreement that the commercial tax rate is not yielded from that property. And we don't know what commercial tax revenue could come from that property, and that's what this committee would do. It would investigate how much commercial tax revenue is being left on the table. Now, people say it can't be developed. Well, they said that about where the UPS facility is. That was, that was a 21E site as well. I could tell you this, if it goes to 100 feet, you'll never develop it. And that's, we know as a fact, what they wanna do. They wanna go to 100 feet. Town Meeting has put an overlay zoning district on this for solar, as a solar farm. No one has investigated how much energy that would yield, how many homes that would power, and so forth. That should be addressed by this committee. It would be addressed by this committee, and that information would be made public. More importantly, a landfill in an area of critical environmental concern, current regulations prevent expansion of a, of a landfill in an A C E C. Two different governors, Governor Baker and now Governor Healy, their administrations have put in writing that the site is not suitable. Without a determination of suitability for expansion, a request cannot go before the Board of Health. And they're the only ones, the Board of Health's the only one that can allow it. But in order for it to get there, the D E P has to say it's suitable. It's not suitable because it's in an A C E C. And two administrations have said no. Currently, as of last month, ash is already being trucked out with zero impact to Saugus, none. 107 is going down state highways to Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury's thrilled to get it. They, they, they like their ash landfill because it was designed with proper liner and so forth. They have no problem with it. The fact of the matter is Saugus's landfill is not properly designed. It is on a consent decree. It has never been, there's never been any testing outside of that landfill to the waters as to what may be escaping. This is not an adversarial process. This should be a collaborative process like it was with Aggregate. There are potential benefits for Saugus that far transcend anything that you've heard by going along with some sort of a proposal that is outside of the realm of public law and, and, and regulation. That's it. I hope you support it, and I look forward to, to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manoukian. Any further discussion on Article 25? Yes, Ms. Panetta.
Good evening, Mr. Town Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deborah Panetta, and I live at 1 Bellevue Street. I am here before you this evening because I strongly support this article, creating a landfill closure committee. The committee will determine the best course of action for the closing of this landfill. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is not gonna issue a site suitability determination that allows expansion. In order for an application to go before our Board of Health, the D E P must make a determination that the site is suitable for expansion. Because the landfill is in an area of critical environmental concern, an A C E C, two administrations, both the Baker's administration and the Healy administration, have stated that this site is not suitable for expansion. The Mass D E P also stated, when they came to a forum in this auditorium a couple of years ago, that expansion would not be allowed. Therefore, an expansion request to our Board of Health cannot proceed. Considering the dangers of sea level rise and severe flooding in that area, it makes sense that the landfill should close. We all know that the landfill was supposed to close in 1996, and they have received multiple expansions. But now they're close to capacity and have started trucking 50% of their ash every day to Shrewsbury. I strongly believe that a closure committee should be established now, regardless of when that landfill closes. It will have to close at some point, we all know that. And not having a remediation plan is irresponsible for our town. We need to do something. Saugus created a closure plan years ago for Aggregate Industries, as well as for the Saugus stump that was capped behind our D P W, which requires ongoing reporting. A closure committee would also look into other uses for that property, which could provide an economic and/or environmental benefit for our town, like a solar farm, or commercial use. Our number one priority as elected officials is the health and well-being of our residents. A closure committee is in the best interest of everyone involved. Please vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Any further discussion on Article 25? Mr. Palaschi.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. This is a subject that I've never really ever gotten involved with, but even though I'm on Precinct 7 on North Saugus, it's, it's still a town-wide issue, and we need to help protect the people in the entire town. Now, as I said, I have never really gotten involved in this, and I've watched the comedy of errors, if you will, as to how we've gotten to this point, and kicked the can down the road long enough. I think it's time to draw a line in the sand, so to speak, and end this once and for all for the good of all of the town. It's much more important than the financial interests of an organization or even to, to the town. It's essential that we protect the resources, and I know that those folks will tell us, if you go over there, you'll see all kinds of wildlife and all of that sort of thing. But I do not wanna be looking at a 100-foot mountain that serves absolutely no purpose at all. It would be an outstanding solar farm, obviously. So I really hope you'll, you'll support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palaschi. Any further discussion? We got a young lady down the back here who had a hand up. Yes, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Harris-McCarrio from 255 Lynn Falls Parkway. Thank you, Town Moderator and Town Meeting Members. I wanna echo everything that, um, selectman Panetta said that I agree with, and also add that forming a closing committee will add some monitoring and protection from the town on the actual open permit. There are lots of conditions to close out the 2018 permit, and right now, we have no oversight or communication or any sort of timeline from, um, Wynn Waste at this point. So I think forming a closing committee would, at the very least, even if we don't know what's gonna happen, whether it's going to close in the end or if the state will let them expand, we'll at least be able to close out the actual current permit in the proper way. So I really hope that the Town Meeting Members, you, um, vote to form a closure committee to at least have some extra oversight and communication. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Costello.
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. I wanna basically just say that everything you've heard thus far with regards to my colleague, Mr. Manoukian, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and a number of other proponents of this article, is absolutely true. If we don't do something, we will end up with a 100-foot mountain of toxic ash over there on 107. My colleagues and I in Precinct 10 made a presentation not too long ago in which we went chapter and verse on, on what Wynn Waste would like to do, which is not to the better interests of us or anyone else in this entire town, or in Revere, or in Lynn. Now, earlier this evening, we passed Article 18, and I ask you now to continue on with this and go on and support this article and get this ash pile capped permanently. Otherwise, we're gonna have a mountain of toxic ash down there, and God knows how long it's gonna stay there before it ends up in the Atlantic Ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Any further discussion on Article 25? Yes, Mr. Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. And I forgot to congratulate you and all the Town Meeting Members that got elected recently. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in the establishment of the Ashland Field Committee. The landfill started out as an unlined landfill in the 1950s, as you know, and today it still remains the state's only unlined landfill. In a letter dated November 16th from Mass D E P Commissioner Martin Sulberg, Mass D E P has determined that additional ash cover over the 50-foot maximum height to expand the landfill's footprint will not be allowed because it is against the law. It is quite clear that the landfill was never meant to be a forever solution. A 1984 property tax agreement between Saugus and Resco, that was the name of the facility at the time, mentions development of the 248-acre landfill property. On page 2 of that agreement, both parties will work together to assist in the development of the landfill. Page 8 of the same agreement, to facilitate the expeditious commercial development of the landfill. The application of ash residue will serve as a final grade material prior to the commercial development of that landfill. In 1984, there was a clarifying property tax agreement by our former town manager Ed Collins. It had to do with Saugus, Resco, now Whelan Brader's name. In the event that the actual landfill property is developed for any purpose other than the storage of ash, the property will be taxed in the same manner as similar property within town that's commercial and residential tax rate. In 2003, when Whelan Brader submitted plans to our planning board to subdivide the 248-acre landfill into 12 commercial lots. Again, in 2017, when Whelan Brader submitted plans to our planning board to subdivide the 248-acre landfill into 10 commercial lots. At that time, his engineer, Representative Whelan Brader, the representative said potential uses for the property, which included an industrial park and a solar farm. A few years ago, the town installed a four-acre solar farm on the old D P W landfill that we capped. The town manager negotiated a tax agreement of $20,000 a year. A solar farm at the Wynn's 240-acre landfill potentially could generate $1.2 million a year for the town of Saugus. Consequently, over 25 years, Saugus could receive an economic benefit of $31 million. Saugus, we can do better. I truly believe that we should work with Wynn to explore potential development opportunities which would provide a greater, long-term, forever economic benefit to the town of Saugus. 25 more years of toxic ash dumping could result in a landfill height of approximately 100 feet. Unfortunately, development opportunities would be lost at that height. Continued dumping of toxic ash in an area of critical environmental concern for another 25 years is not in the best interest of our public or environmental health. Moreover, it is not in the best interest of Saugus's long-term, forever economic health. I ask that you please support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion on Article 25? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
All right, we have a request for a roll call vote on Article 25. All in favor of the, um, forming an Ash landfill closure committee that will consist of two selectmen appointed by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, two town meeting members from Precinct 10 appointed by the town moderator, and the town manager or his designee. The purpose of the committee is to identify timeframes for final closure, post-closure maintenance and monitoring, post-closure economic reuse possibilities, and other related issues that may be identified. All appointments to be made within two weeks of the adjournment, adjournment of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. A representative of- Meeting, a representative of Wynn Waste will be invited by the moderator to participate as a non-voting member of the committee. So all in favor, when the town clerk calls your name, signify by saying yes. Opposed, signify by saying no.
Bartolo.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Barubi.
Yes.
Brown.
I represent.
Camuso.
Yes.
Japoris. Connors.
Yes.
Costello.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Delios. Doherty. Dunn.
Yes.
Federico.
Yes.
Ferrari.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Grabowski.
Yes.
Herman Durant.
Yes.
Hickman.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
LaPresti.
Yes.
Minugian.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Meredith.
Yes.
Mareschi.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pelashi.
Yes.
Palomba.
Yes.
Panetta.
Yes.
Panico.
Yes.
Harlente.
Yes.
Ravkinik. I keep killing you tonight, I'm so sorry. I can't get it out. Ring.
Yes.
Rosetti.
Yes.
Sacco.
Yes.
Shenna.
Yes.
Scuzzarella.
Yes.
Shelkovsky.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Straznick.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Travers.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Whitcomb.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
Forty-four yes, zero nays, and one abstain. I just can't put it in. If I hit an A, it automatically goes to absent, so I will put that in manually later.
All right, so with that, Article 25 has passed. All right, bear with me here for one second. All right, it's come to my attention that there may have been a discrepancy in the hand counting on Article 23. So what I'm going to do is, we'll just go back to that. Article 23 was the to establish a 10-person community engagement committee. No, wait a second. Oh, yeah, to establish a 10-person community engagement committee. Purpose of the committee, to generate more participation by community members in civic matters, increase civic engagement through educational forums, and existing town public events. 10-person committee made up of one person from each precinct, and it doesn't have a budget. Recommendations are non-binding. They're going to meet bimonthly, participate in two public events, and will hold one educational forum prior to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. All meetings will be public. Notice will be posted on the town's website at least 48 hours prior to each meeting. This was submitted by Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2, Matt Palante. And what I'm going to do, we're going to go back, and I'm going to call for a roll call vote, so we have an accurate count on that. The clerk will bear with me. So all in favor of Article 23 as presented. When your name is called, signify by saying yes. All opposed, signify by saying no. What's that? A legal opinion?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. It has come to our attention that there was a question on one of the votes. It was a hand count. It is within the discretion of the moderator to ask for a roll call vote if a town meeting member questions the hand count itself. So the moderator runs the meeting. He's in charge of the meeting. He counts the votes. So you would get a more accurate vote by getting a roll call vote, as he is suggesting, and it's within his authority to make that determination.
Ellen, when you are ready. There's nothing we can do about people who, they have the right to do that if someone leaves during the meeting. Any vote that takes place after that wouldn't have mattered.
We just took a vote and have 26. Despite the six people here, there's a breakout as of the last vote. We only have five people. On the vote here, the 92, 21 equals 1.
All right, let's, Maureen, please. All right, can we, we'll hold off the discussion. Again, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Japoris. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski. Herman Durant. Hickman. Was that a no? Kelly. Long. LaPresti. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Pelashi. Palomba. Panetta. Panico. Peolini. Harlente. Ravkinik. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Shelkovsky. Spencer. Straznick. Thompson. Travers. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. Twenty-two yes, 21 nays, four absent, and two abstains.
With that, Article 23 has passed. Thank you for your patience on that. We're at the point in the evening where it's nine minutes past 10 right now. We have two more articles that we could discuss this evening, Articles 26 and 27, but I'm going to, I'm going to put it to your pleasure whether or not you'd like to do that, or we can pick those up next week. I have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adjournment at this time, and we'll come back next week and start again? All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, guys. Hey.